I prefer we don't have to do something at the table. It's kind of good.
Alright, sounds good.
We also go back to the mobile. You.
Do you have one of those one minutes?
Do you have one of those one minutes? But if not, and I don't, and I didn't, because you know, you're streaming for yourself. Right? Because it goes in the left. Yeah, hang on. Oh, do you want to share with her too? I can do it. Oh, I thought you said share with her. Yeah. So I didn't have, I'm just saying. I said, no, she can either have this. Just have that. What can I say? Sorry. Karen, I mean, you can, yeah. I'm still. I just have to.
This is going, this is going. There's a physical holiday tomorrow on Friday.
Is that what it is?
I did. I'll make sure.
I hope that's what you're saying.
Yeah, we have a lot of kids absent today.
Oh, really?
Yes. Yes. But I'm surprised that now that I think about it, when dismissal, we had a lot at our, at our despair. So I guess tomorrow, it'll be up tomorrow.
I hope so.
They'll be worse tomorrow. Yep. Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the East Point Community Schools Board of Education, April 11th, 2022 at 6:33. Please call the roll.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mrs. Rafer.
Here.
Dr. Early.
Here.
Mr. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Grunenberg. Ms. DeVita is here too. And Mr. Warrior is absent.
Okay, if we could all please stand.
Yeah, wait a little second. Everybody get position. Thank you. Thanks for leaving us.
Our president, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is approve of the agenda. There's nothing to be added, right? Okay. I'll take a motion. Please put the motions for approval of the agenda.
Don't move. I'm sorry, second.
Please call a vote.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mrs. Rafer.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Grunenberg.
Yes.
And Ms. DeVita, yes.
Uh, next, I need a motion for consent agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Support. Please call a vote.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mrs. Rafer.
Yes.
Dr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Grunenberg.
Yes.
And Ms. DeVita, yes.
Next is the superintendent's report. Back to the vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we have a very important presentation that we are going to be receiving. I believe this is the final presentation. No, we have the middle school left still. So this is our second to last presentation. And we have our two principals from our three, five buildings who will be presenting this evening. We have Mrs. Hillibrand, and we have Mrs. Piper.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm Julie Piper. I'm the principal at Bellevue.
And I'm Mrs. Hillibrand, the principal at Pleasant View.
There's a green light on. It's.
Never give me a microphone.
So my thing is first, but so I guess I'm going first. Yes. Sorry, okay. Well, it goes back and forth. So, yeah, you're B, so. All right, so we wanted to highlight some of the things that we're doing in our buildings tonight with our social, emotional, and parental involvement. Some, some of the, we recognize this year that our students are needing more social and emotional support than in previous years. And so students are receiving multiple opportunities to participate in programs to support their emotional well-being, and given opportunities to work in social settings outside the classroom as well as inside the classroom. So this is a list of some of the things that are happening at Bellevue. We have a Bigs and Littles program. We have a Joy of Books, a Color Me Beautiful program. The students are writing a newsletter, not the, not the school newsletter, but a newsletter that is directed by students. They interview teachers, they write poems, they write little articles about things that interest them. And these, these programs are led by teachers and paras in the, in the building. We have grief groups, so our social worker recognized that we have more students that have lost family members that are close over the last couple of years. And we need to support those students and those families in, in their grief, and give them support for that, opportunities to talk about it, some coping skills. We actually have planned later in the year, near Memorial Day, a memorial walk, where our students will be able to highlight their family members, and we're going to invite their families to participate in that memorial walk as well. We had last week, the week before spring break, we had our literacy night. We did bingo for books. It was fabulous. It was so well-received because it was our first parent come-in-the-building since March of 2020 activity, and they were so excited. We had 65 people, we had 25 families represented, and it was just, it was exciting for everyone. Everybody left lots and lots of books. We have a math night that we'll be doing later in the spring. We had March's Reading Month. We had some guest readers from our community. So the Rotary sent some people to read. We had families come read. We had former students of, one of my teachers that's been there for 30 years or so, one of her first students came and read to her class. And so they were able to see that connection between student and teacher. One of the supports that our students receive is rewards through Dojo, and so they get to shop at the Dojo store with their points. Our social worker is, has worked a lot this year with parents to help the parents find programs for the students that are in crisis. And then in the winter, because we could not have families come in, we videoed their winter concerts, and we presented that on Dojo so that the parents were able, students were able to perform, and the parents were able to see it even though that they couldn't be there in person.
And at Pleasant View, we are still continuing with the Leader in Me, and it is recognized as a social, emotional program. And it's based on Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. It builds, helps to build individual leadership skills. There's a curriculum, we have, where we focus on the habits. Every teacher's having daily morning meetings. The students with Leader in Me have leadership notebooks. They're setting goals for themselves in academics and behavior. They're recognized, and if you look further down, March was Mental Health Month. And we, so we tied that in team building in with our seven habits. And habit six is synergize, which is working together. And you'll see a picture in our Points of Pride. We have our Pearl Girls, which I'll talk about when we have our highlight. Guys with ties are meeting at lunchtime monthly. Another really exciting thing that's been going on is we have three interns from Michigan State. They're our student teachers, and as part of their program, they're to do a community service project, and they chose to have a book club for our third graders. And it's been really well-received, and there's been about 60 third graders that have been attending throughout the year. We gave it a little stop after Christmas due to COVID, but it's picked back up. And Wednesday, they're having their big graduation celebration. It's their last, it's their last one, and they just had a presentation, and they used poetry. The kids wrote poems and did dances and rap songs, and they did a really nice job. We've also, with some of our Title I money, have used or have done some character-building assemblies. They've been interactive and well-received by the kids. They focused on kindness, respect, and some anti-bullying. Our last one was anti-bullying. We too have PBIS incentives. We do things monthly for the kids. I give broadcasts for the, the school on Mondays where we focus on habit behaviors. We have a positive word of the week. I'll give a quote that ties in with whatever we're working on for that week, and the kids will say to me, "How do you get on the TV, Mrs. Hillibrand?" And I'm like, "I just go onto Google Meets and I tape myself," or video myself. So that's some of the things that we've been doing this year at Pleasant View.
So the program that I want to highlight for Bellevue is called Bigs and Littles. And it's kind of a spin-off of the Big Brother, Big Sister program. So this is something that our social worker started with our students. So a third grader is assigned to a fifth grader. So the third graders are the littles, and the fifth graders are the bigs. And basically, it's a mentoring type, tutoring-type program. And so there's a lot that happens. These are just some of the, some of the things that happen. So they can help with the schoolwork. So we have a struggling student, "Oh, you want your big to come help you with that? Or you want to go see your little with that?" And they love to do that. The big thing that's come out of it is some problem resolution. So as I mentioned earlier, we have some social, emotional things, and we've got some behaviors sometimes, but we'll have a student come, you know, "I'm really having trouble with this, this, this issue. Can I go talk to my big and see how my big would help me solve that problem?" So even the students are asking, the parents are saying, "Hey, Johnny's coming home and telling me about his big. What, what is that?" And so we'll tell them about it, and they'll say, "Oh, okay." And so maybe I'll call the parent and say, "Well, has he been able to meet with his big lately?" Or vice versa with the little, depending on, you know, who's really in need. So the fifth graders are the bigs, and they really think that they're, they're helping the littles, which they are, but it's really helping them as well because they're working on their problem resolution and solution-type things, and also being that role model. They get to have monthly lunch dates during the third grade lunch, or sometimes the fifth grade lunch. And so they'll get to have lunch with their buddy. Sometimes they just say, "Can I go say hi to my buddy, my big or my little?" "Yeah, you can. Do you know where they are?" "Yes, okay. All right, you got five minutes, and you got to go back to class." And it's, it's really been good for the students, the bigs and the littles. And then these are just some photographs of the, the girl bigs with their littles, and then some students helping each other with that.
And the program that I wanted to highlight at Pleasant View is our Pearl Girl program. And we've had this for ongoing, I think for at least four years now, at least. And it's a girl group for our fifth grade girls. Our media para, Mrs. Clark, runs it. And it really gives the girls, it's helping to build relationships with other adults and staff members in the building besides their teachers. Sometimes, you know, the students aren't maybe as comfortable to go up to their teacher, but if they're having an issue or whatever, they may ask to go see Mrs. Clark. So it's a nice relationship building, and, and the kids know that there's also someone else besides their teacher or whomever that cares about them in the building, and they can go to them. Just recently, the East Point Credit Union donated banks, and I have a picture of that one, it's coming up, to the girls. And they got bank registers and some other swag from the credit union. But it also gave them information about starting a savings account. And Mrs. Clark goes over finances and the importance of, you know, saving money. And so it's giving them some really good life skills as well. They work on conflict resolution. You know, sometimes they may just tackle a topic that kind of comes up that's been going on in the classroom, and, and Mrs. Clark may address it. She brought in a state trooper to go over internet and social media safety with the girls. That's a really hot topic, and it's something that the girls, especially going into middle school, you know, it's something that they really need to be aware of. There's some personal care. They also do community service. They, prior to this year, they've made blankets and for homeless shelters. They did some cleaning around the building at Pleasant View. So she really does a well-rounded program with the girls. And today, they were making bracelets. They've made, you know, pocket purses. So they do all types of different things, and it's a great program. And the girls really, really enjoy being there. And I think, Mary, you saw some of that when you were at Pleasant View as well.
So these are just some highlight photos, and I didn't mention it, but one of the things that I, and I, you probably are too, we're just so excited to have a music program at our three-through-five buildings because this is the first time in three years that we've had a music program that has maintained. So in this top picture, they are playing xylophones. And we've got, what are those, recorders? Today, I'd already done this, but today, she, she pulled out the ukuleles that she got donated through Donors Choose, and so they started working on ukuleles. So it's just like, the music program is phenomenal, not just because we haven't had one, but what they are doing in there is just great. And like, the kids are engaged, they are enjoying it, they're participating, they're loving it. So we have the principal's luncheon, which we have once or so a month down here in the bottom. We have one of our, we have a, a long-term building sub who is in charge of our boys group, and so he's interacting with them during their time. Those are some of our readers that came in, our outside readers. It was the Rotary, right? Okay, the Rotary that came in. And then there's just a picture from family, like, that was our, that was the very first people that got there. The gym was actually full. We had all of our lunch tables down, and all of our extra lunch tables brought in as well. And it was full, and it was fabulous.
In that one corner by the tree, that's a picture of the girls with their things donated from the credit union. We have some pictures of our team-building exercises with our third, or one is with our fifth grade and our third graders. We have a picture at the very bottom there. It has somebody's head, I didn't crop that well. But what about the presentation of the third grade book club? We also have them where they're working on, on some things in the book club, some strategies. We had a fourth grade that did an excellent job for Black History Month and had a wonderful display. On St. Patrick's Day, there I am with some of my favorite third graders that make me according to my shirt, and I feel that way, the luckiest principal ever. And then up at the top, we have a really cohesive staff that works really well together.
Great time if the board has any questions.
Yeah, I have a question. With the guys with ties and the girls with pearls, is that like a mentoring group? How is that laying set up?
Somewhat. Mrs. Clark kind of is a mentor to those girls. They're not mentoring, you know, younger children, but yes, it's, it's somewhat of a mentoring, and it's just a girls' group. Like I said, it gives that extra person in the building that they build a relationship with. So yes, you can say she is mentoring those girls and the boys. Mm-hmm. She's meeting with them at lunch. And I know just recently, a student brought in his guitar and played for the kids in the, in the, at lunchtime. So we're trying to get the boys going. We just haven't had the male faculty to, to do that. So she took it over, the girls suggested that the boys have something too, so.
Oh, so it's a girl doing the guys with ties?
Yes.
But I'm sure if you have time.
No, it has not always been that way. We just haven't had the male faculty this year. Boys to men. Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, and my second question is, with the bigs and the littles, how are they paired?
So first of all, that we've gotten permission from all of the parents for the students to participate in any of these programs. But our social worker kind of takes note of the needs of the children, both the bigs and the littles, and she kind of pairs them based on their level of need and their level of capability to work with other people. And so you might have some students that have similar behaviors paired together so that they can work through those behaviors together.
So it doesn't have anything to do with grades and A, B students?
No, no, no.
Mrs. Hillibrand, thank you for the presentation that the third graders did. That was really awesome. I had a chance to talk to some of the kids afterwards. They were really excited about what they were able to do. And I know a couple of the council members, and I'm able to talk to them. Born on the water, and they demonstrated a really great understanding of what they were talking about through the various genres that they displayed. So that was really awesome. I was going to say something about that later, but you're here now.
Well, thank you, and I'm glad you enjoyed yourself. We're happy to have you anytime.
Yeah, I, I want to say I really commend you both on all the good things that you're doing at, at these schools. It's just fabulous. I really want to say that the one thing that grabbed me was the grief groups because we often forget that our babies are affected by grief also. So that the fact that you have that is, is like extra special. And if anything has to be canceled, don't let that be.
Great presentation. Thank you.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say it's nice to hear about the mentoring on the balls, even with adult or the kids together, the students together. That is so nice to hear. And really, really great to hear about the students because I know I worked before on the schools, and sometimes just that little, that older kid, that older student with the younger student, and they have almost the same, similar kind of, like, what's going on situations. Sometimes they really help each other. That's really good to hear too. And I really like to hear also about the grief too, and also with bullying. I feel like we sometimes forget that, not only in the schools it goes on, but even outside, and then sometimes it comes into the schools, and you know, it's not even a situation maybe that wasn't, but the bullying continues. So it's good to hear that. I like hearing that because that's a big thing. They, they, and just, you know, it's, I don't think bullying never goes away. It's one bit, always sticks around. So just great job, really, really great job. Thank you. Good to hear and everything.
Well, Dr. Ed has stolen my question, so I'm just going to say, this is just great to hear about the bullying. And I was really into the guys with ties. I want to hear a little bit more about the guys with ties. You kind of answered everything. And the bullying, we could never do enough about trying to society bullying. So just keep up the good work. I mean, it's just, just excellent. Great work. Thank you.
Thanks.
They say it all, and I kind of have a little first-hand analysis because one of my grandchildren is in the world too. And I want to know if I was talking to them, because I'm really talking to them.
Well, thank you both for your presentations tonight. And please express your, our appreciation to your staff also because I know you're here presenting, but it's their work oftentimes, and, and often their passion too. So thank them, please, and pass that on. And we appreciate you sharing this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
And I know you guys started early today and have other things that you might need to do. So if you need to sneak out, don't, it's not a problem at all, we understand, so. It may not. I do have a couple of other announcements, though, as part of the superintendent's report. We did just return from our spring break. And the first few weeks after coming back from spring break is our state testing window. So we've now entered our state testing window. Many of our students across the district are within, if not this week, over the next week or two or three will be engaging in their various state tests. We also, this coming Friday, will not have school for the Easter holiday, Good Friday. And then finally, I want to just address, and I talked to Mr. Ward earlier today, and I wanted to just address his, his absence because I do think it's obvious in public, especially now that the rest of us are, we've kind of returned back to having a full team up here in, in these seats. And so I spoke with Mr. Ward today, and I know that he's updated the board directly, but I wanted to let the community know. He is battling with some health issues currently that are requiring him to kind of take, step back a little from his, his position and, and work on the board. He's still very interested in getting back to this work, cares deeply about our district, but because of those health issues, he's kind of taking care of that. He is getting treatment through the University of Michigan. He's got an appointment coming next Monday. But in the meantime, while that's kind of going on, we can probably expect to see some additional absences from him. And then finally, there is a GoFundMe because one of the challenges that Mr. Ward's facing is he's not able to continue his working right now. And so there is a GoFundMe to help him and his family with some of the expenses that they're currently facing. And so I just want to make sure that, that people were aware of those as options. And of course, our prayers and thoughts go out to Mr. Ward and his entire family because as we know, when you have health issues like this, it, it isn't just Mr. Ward that's experiencing that, but it's his entire family who, who has come around him and really lifted him up. And so I just wanted to make sure I had a chance to address that. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is first hearing of the public. Say, well, wish.
Does anyone wish to be heard? Anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none. That opens and closes at seven fifty-seven? Or six fifty-seven, I'm sorry. Next item, discussion action, work of education, we have schools of choice. I mean, do we need to explain them? I mean, really, there's just a difference between the two pretty much.
Every year, twice a year, we have to, the board has an opportunity to consider whether we want to accept students into the district for, for schools of choice. The first resolution is 105, which is for students who are within the county, are Macomb County. And then schools of choice 105C is to accept students from outside the county of Macomb.
And we do, we prefer to have two separate motions. So is there a motion for the first one?
Place forth a motion that we go into schools of choice 105, resolution.
Support.
Do we vote at the same time? No, no, we can do that one. Please call a vote.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mrs. Rafer?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Grubenberg?
No.
And Ms. DeVita, no.
Is there a motion for the second one?
Place forth a motion that would go into schools of choice 105C, resolution.
Support.
Please call a vote.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Rafer?
Yes.
Dr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Grubenberg?
No.
And Ms. DeVita, no.
Okay, next we have second hearing of the public. Does anyone wish to be heard? Does anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none. That open and closes at seven o'clock. Next we have trustees' announcements, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank the, uh, two principals and their staff for the excellent presentation. And I'm glad everybody seems to have had a great spring break. And welcome back to class. Let's get ready to take those tests and ASAM. Thank you, Dr. McLeod, for you and your staff doing a great job. And thank you to the public for allowing me to work for you all. And thank you to the board. It's an honor, a privilege and a pleasure. Thank you.
Ms. Rafer?
I have so much to say and I'll try to do it in two minutes or less. Somebody can time me on that.
Go.
I feel like I owe people an explanation. One for no vote on the approval contract that we voted on last week. And the reason for that is because I have no idea what the qualifications were. So I could not in all conscience vote for a contract with someone I don't know what they know. Now, I understand that it was told that the board considered your six weeks in the district, your interview. However, I've not been able to find anyone to tell me who was involved in that interview. It's not that I'm trying to be arbitrary, but I've searched high and low trying to find information that would justify what took place, and I could not find it. It does not mean that I don't care about the district because I do. And it's because I do that I think part of upholding that oath, which includes the laws of Michigan, means that I have to uphold the laws of Michigan as well as that oath of office. So I would hope that moving forward, we'll attempt to do things that are more in line with the laws of the land and that are included in the bylaws of this particular board. I don't want anyone to speculate about what I think or what I say. Come ask me. I'm more than happy to explain it. Thank you.
Dr. Early?
I want to say I really appreciate the fact that we have principals that are willing to come and show us what is going on in each school. It's been said and I've heard that parents don't participate. But obviously, we can see that is not true, that parents are participating. They're coming to the classrooms, they're, they care about what is happening with their children. And it's really appalling to hear the negativeness about the district when, how do you know it's negative going on in the schools when you don't come and volunteer? When you don't donate your time, when you don't donate your money, when you don't come up to a school board? And we have a building that we can supply people to sit here and people don't show up. We do call-outs and then we hear, that board is toxic. How do you know that the board is toxic if you never come and sit with us? You never come and call us? You never talk to us? You never say anything to us? But then you spread these blanket statements around and we're supposed to just sit with it? Today, I'm not going to sit with it. If you want to talk to us, if you want to know what's going on in the district, come to us. I got an email today from someone who said, I just don't know where to go. I said, the next step is go talk to your building supervisors, go talk to the administration, come to the board meetings. So then we know that the problems exist. Because if we don't know they exist, there's no that, we're, no way we're going to ever be able to take care of them. And so for the blanket statements and all of the naysayers, the administration, the teachers, the students, the parents, they're working hard to make sure that their kids get an education. And if you want to know what's going on, go knock on the door and ask them and stop taking the word from here or there, uh, there. Go find out for yourself what's really happening in these buildings.
Ms. DeVita?
I'm going to piggyback, Dr. Early, on this. Because, yeah, this has been sitting with me too. Let's just remember negativity just hurts the students, the staff and the families that are with our students. And so it just bothers me about the whole negativity. And I'm so with Dr. Early, so yes, I piggyback with her on everything she said. Negativity is just a very, very, you know, wrong thing. And it can go very bad easily. And it just hurts, it just hurts our students and our staff and the families when there's just so much negativity. When you don't know. And you know what? And sometimes you may not understand because you're not sitting with us and there are certain things we can't say or certain things we're not, you know, we have closed sessions. But you don't understand certain things. And so then the negativity just comes because you don't understand it or you don't understand what's going on in our schools either because you don't, you know, you know, go there or, you know, want to learn on what's going on. It's just always bad, bad, bad. So yes, I agree with you and it angers me very much. Other than that, thank you to Ms. Hillebrand and Ms. Piper. Did a wonderful job on your presentation. And yes, just like Dr. Early said, thank you for coming and sharing with us. It's good to hear all what's going on. And so kudos to you and kudos to our students. Keep up the good work and our staff that goes above and beyond. And Dr. McLeod and his staff, all his team over there, kudos to you too and keep up the good job. And I know, I can't speak for everybody else, but I know appreciate it from everybody and all of the good work you guys do. And sometimes it's just, there's times where we're just, I feel like we're, we're just pushing along, you know? Okay, it's going to get there, it's going to get there, but it's all about positivity. And, you know, we just stay positive and just like through the time when we were going through a really bad time of the, you know, saving the school. And you know what? We stayed positive and it was a great outcome. So keep up the positivity.
I think everybody has said everything that we want to say. So I guess I'm going to say what's on my heart and mind too tonight. I'm going to puke the next time somebody walks up to me and say, well, I don't have any children in the district or they don't go to school anywhere. But on the other hand, the district is pitiful. How can we be transparent? And I'm looking in the camera, how can we be transparent when you're not showing up? We're asking you guys to come to the meetings. Come, come, come support the children, come support the board, come support this administration that's doing a marvelous job. But you won't come. No service, it's nothing but lip service. Come on and join the team. We're doing a great job here. Come on with a winner. Thank you for the principals to come in to give their, uh, uh, reports tonight. We ask that you continue to support them, support the children. And, and let's, let's become one, let's operate as one. Thanks.
Okay, a couple of things. First off, I want to thank the board for taking care of business as far as schools of choice is concerned. You've afforded me the chance once again to put my shot across the bow. Even though I realize that there is financial benefits probably to the district for having that program, I think the program overall is detrimental to public education. So that's why I like to put a shot across the bow when I have the opportunity. Also, I want to clarify one thing a board member set up here. Our next superintendent clearly has six years of experience in the district, now six weeks. And then I just, uh, there's two other things and I, I don't know how to, sometimes you want to order things in a certain order, right? Well, first off, as far as Mr. Ward's concerned, health issues, um, he's got to take care of them, there's no doubt. But I can say, even as, as, uh, difficult as his health issues are currently, he has been still engaged. Even though he hasn't been coming to the meeting, he has been calling to the district. He's talked to the superintendent a couple, three times, I know. He has sent us emails and been engaged with us to let us know what's going on with him. And I think all of our energy and positive thinking needs to go to one of our fellow board members. Because he really needs it right now. And he's a big part of the team. And then I'm reminded too of, when I first got on the board and I went to the very first conference, I remember, and I don't remember the, the woman's name, but I do remember she was in her eighties. And she was the president of MASB at the time. And you guys are all familiar how the president of MASB gives a speech every year. And at that point, I was amazed, well, I'll tell you the theme of the speech after, but I was amazed first off that she gave, delivered the speech as if she was speaking from a teleprompter. And then when she got done, I knew there was no teleprompter there. She had nothing, nothing in front of her. So then I said, did you memorize that? And she said, no, it was all extemporaneous. Well, when somebody, and I think, and anybody knows anything about public speaking, if you can deliver an extemporaneous speech and it seems as if you're reading it from a teleprompter because it's that prepared, I was told years ago that you have to be very passionate about what you're speaking about in order for that to happen. And when you are, it, it comes across and it is delivered that way. The theme of her speech was, um, what takes a lot of energy, time and energy to build can be torn down in a short period of time. I'm just thankful that we have a bunch of builders in this district. Because I think what you're building, you just keep building. Ain't nobody going to tear it down. Because you guys got to go. Okay? That's about all I got to say. Thank you very much, meeting adjourned.